I'd like to call the August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners to order. Thank you for being with us. We will begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This weekend, this weekend, white nationalists, Nazis, and other white supremacists converged on Charlottesville, Virginia. Three Americans lost their lives during their demonstrations. One was Heather Hire, thirty-two-year-old woman, who was killed in an act of domestic terrorism when one of the protesters drove their car into a crowd of people. Two Virginia state troopers also died over the weekend when their helicopter crashed during patrols monitoring the rally. In the nineteen forties, millions of Americans in the Greatest Generation mobilized to stop the spread of Nazi control in Europe. Now there are Nazis marching down the main street of an American city that borders North Carolina, and more rallies are being planned in cities throughout the country. Our country was founded on the principle of equality. Originally, that concept of equality applied only to white males who were wealthy enough to own property. We've made great progress expanding our understanding that equality applies to all people. But as the demonstrations of bigotry and hate have shown us, the struggle is not, the struggle is not over. Before we begin our meeting this evening, let us hold a moment of silence for the three Americans who lost their lives during the demonstrations in Virginia this week, for the two men who dedicated their lives to protection of public safety, and the young woman who upheld the best ideals of this country. Thank you. And thank you all for being with us this evening. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the Board of Commissioners. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by this Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, and to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any of the public contracts coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters before the Board this evening." We are now at our public comments section of the beginning of our meeting. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave a question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. And the Board reserves the right to deny public, public address on any subject previously presented to the Board at the same meeting. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment at this time? Great, we'll start over here, and then you'll be next.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you. I'm Todd Stimson. You met me the last time you had a meeting. I like how you started out the meeting by saying that everybody should be created or treated equally, and us in the cannabis community would like to be treated equally too. The hatred and bigotry towards us in the community needs to stop for our benefit and for the benefit of many citizens in Buncombe County and elsewhere. I'll start by, these are four books right here. These are four government studies. Something else I'd like to mention is, the very last person that spoke at the public comments the last time was not with us, and you heard him mention that he even had a friend that used cannabis for cancer. This was somebody from the public that wasn't even with us, that was brave enough to even speak about cannabis and how it was being used to benefit, oh, his friend. These are four studies by the government. I'll start with the first one. The first one will show that, how it was started with racism. How marijuana is spelled here, it's M-A-R-I-H-U-A-N-A, marijuana. It was against the Mexicans that the hatred and bigotry for marijuana started. This was a nineteen seventy-two study, the Schaefer Commission, which I'll read something out of it real quickly. "The Commission feels that the criminalization of possession of marijuana for personal use is socially self-defeating as a means of achieving the object, the objective." So this one's one study, nineteen seventy-two. The next one was nineteen eighty-two. You can see how it's changed a little bit. It's marijuana now with a J. This was from the Institute of Medicine. This has the benefits. There is adverse reactions, but still, none of the adverse reactions are close to what the harm that's caused by the law. The next one is a nineteen ninety-nine study from the Institute of Medicine. This is all government studies. The next one goes to the real name, cannabis. That's what it's called, not from racism, not from bigotry, not from rhetoric, cannabis. This was a study released this year in January. And so I want to tell you, there's many benefits for many people, and I would really appreciate the resolution or letter of support from you guys for the General Assembly. And I appreciate your time, and I have some postcards here I'll pass, to pass on to you. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you. All right, yes, sir. And then you can go next. Yep.
Greetings, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Milton Byrd. I have an M.D.-Ph.D. education in the field of respiratory therapy. I am a retired specialist from that field. I also was a former elected official of nine years, wound up stepping down due to an illegal search of my home for cannabis, and they found ten seeds at my home, which started a long career of me looking into the science of cannabinoid medicine, which is what we're dealing with here. Every human being has the endocannabinoid system and needs this signaling system to be fed the nutrients of what we call cannabinoids. This is outstanding research that you can find from the National Institute of Health under cannabinoid science. There's over a thousand ninety-six pages on research just by the federal government. Take the time to realize that there has been eighty-four years of history based on lies, prejudice, and misconceptions. We're seeing this kind of division through our entire country when our own pledge of allegiance, pledge of allegiance says indivisible, we as a country. Yet we're not walking that talk. And I'm here to tell you, as one activist that's standing right on the tip of the sword right now in Buncombe County, we are going in the wrong direction. This is not justice, this is not equality, and this is not indivisible. This is a human right. The United Nations has already looked at through the two thousand conventions of all the human rights and the violations that are going on right now by this country. It's time for Americans to stand up and say, "Stop, look, listen, understand, we are indivisible. We are a country of people of equality, not prejudice, not abuses of authority, or attitudes that destroy our unity." It is time for us to step forward instead of saying what we should expect as status quo. I ask you, as someone who's been there doing that and moving forward on this science of cannabinoid medicine, for the healing of us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the members of the public to not applaud following different speakers or to give negative feedback either. We'd just like for each person to be able to give their public comment without feedback from the audience. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Georgiana Connors. I'm the Director of Operations at The Farm. We're a wedding and event center in Canler. I want to thank you all for your support of the brunch bill. When our owners started their business fourteen years ago, it was out of a passion for hosting their own family and wanting to open up their property to be able to host more family gatherings. One of the most precious family gatherings there is is a wedding, where we're bringing together two different communities and creating an opportunity for families to be knitted together. Often, for our guests, that begins on a Friday evening and continues through a Sunday morning. And it's our greatest desire to provide opportunities for our clients to host and entertain and celebrate with their family and friends and their own tradition. For as long as it's been around, for many religions and different groups, this has included alcohol. We are licensed to serve. We are very dedicated to training our employees. We work with A.L.E. to make sure that our service is always in compliance and responsible. And it's important to us that we're able to host these gatherings through Sunday morning, provide a safe place there on the property where guests are staying for them to say their farewells. Often, we see when these gatherings move to downtown Asheville, as they will if we are not able to serve, that people with young children, older guests, people with travel plans miss out on these celebrations. It's also helpful to have them start earlier in the morning. A lot of folks would like to go to services. They have to get home by a certain time. And if they can gather first thing to say farewell, it's really a very, very sweet time for these families who may not get to see each other very often, to have a final goodbye and spend that time together. So we thank you very much for your support, for your consideration.
All right. Sure, you and the, you can go next, and then who else? And then, Tim, you can follow. Okay?
Good evening, or good, good afternoon. My name is Aaron Clark. I am a priest of fourteen years, and my father was born in Hendersonville. My family has been in the area for over two hundred and fifty years, and my grandparents sold produce to survive during the Great Depression. I suffer from chronic pain and PTSD from police brutality, as well as anxiety. I urge you to consider the medical cannabis resolution. I think once again that it is a human right to use cannabis as medicine, and I implore you to act now on behalf of the constituents.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, County Commissioners. I'm Timothy Sadler. I'm resident of Buncombe County, and I really appreciate the sentiment that you opened with Commissioner Newman. I think that we really, if we are serious about what happened in Charlottesville, we should look at the highest level in the state of Virginia and see how we could have done a better job in terms of policing that situation and also looking at if there are people that are being hired to go to these type of events to divide us as a people. You know, I don't have any evidence to that. I've seen a lot of circumstantial evidence to that note, but I would just ask Commissioners, you Commissioners, to look at those items if we're serious about the issue. And to the note of being serious about equality, of course, I want to speak in favor of some real low-hanging fruit that we have here, guys. We asked for a resolution to be a part of the agenda, and I'm frankly a little surprised we haven't seen that come up yet. I know that there are some technicalities there, but, you know, with the same-sex marriage piece, I think it was basically the same type of scenario. And, you know, we were able to have a resolution passed for that. People are dying every day because we don't have all the tools in our toolkit to address the issues that are happening in our community. Every time I hear that fire truck, those sirens go off, I think, "Why? Why do we have to hear that noise so often?" And statistically, it's a lot to do with the opioids and not being able to have a better suite of solutions here in our community. And I sure would appreciate the gesture of bringing that resolution up. Even if we don't have passage with it, it really would be a commendable thing in the interest of equality, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, in the back.
Good evening. I am Bonnie Vass. I'm a retired physical education teacher for the City of Asheville Catholic School for twenty-seven years. I didn't really intend to come for any particular purpose except for what applies to me, but I've heard so much so far that I felt like I might ought to say a comment myself. I've already talked to Mr. Browning this spring about opening the restrooms at Swananoa Owen, Swananoa, anyway, the park in Owen Park. I felt it was undignified to go to a portage on. So if there's reasons why you can't open a public restroom in the community where I live, then maybe you should see what those reasons might be, for one thing. So that's just one, and I know I don't have much time to speak. When you opened up the meeting about Charlottesville, I was super busy that day, so I didn't really hear anything till after the fact the next day. And then, of course, it was bombarded with everybody's opinion, which I felt like you opened up with your opinion as well. You don't know exactly who was doing what at that meeting, and it was terrible on both parties, if you ask me, to end up in a horrible situation like that, you know, where there's deaths involved. And like the man over here said, if some people are being paid to go to these meetings, it's awful. They should go because they feel like it's important and it's their duty, and they have rights and they want to speak. I've been to several national meetings myself. And the man who said that about the opiates, you might want to go backwards in time, if you're as old as I am, and remember what you were taught in school, that there was a jumping procession to drug use. Somebody told me there were eight deaths on Church Street for a heroin overdose not long ago. So if you go from cigarette smoking to alcohol to marijuana to prescribe drugs or cocaine or heroin, and I've heard there's three or four worse things than heroin, I think you might want to think about Buncombe County. I am a born resident of Buncombe County, and I'm probably going to be a dead resident of Buncombe County. And I care about my country, and I'm part American Indian, and I believe in everybody being equal and having rights. So that's the only reason I was here. It wasn't because of all this, it was because of my rights coming up in a later topic. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And then, Mr. Rice, you can go next. But you're next. You can go now.
Hello. My name is Jody. I'm speaking about cannabis. I am what they call a cannabis refugee. I am from here. However, I'm having, forced to live in Colorado right now to get the help that I need. I have autoimmune, COPD, RA, Crohn's, I could keep going. Seven months, six months ago in one week, I was eighty pounds heavier and couldn't even made it into this room hardly. And I'm just living proof, one more proof of what it can do for you. And I studied the cannabinoids, as well as the terpenes, and I used those properly, and it saved my life. I would not be standing here if it was not for that. And I just felt I needed to let you guys know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can follow. Mr. Rice, speaking now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Glad you got to see me again. It's always good to see a smile up there, you know? Got about three things here. Expand access to childcare in Buncombe County. I want you to instruct your staff to have a very close eye on expanding childcare or early childhood, whatever you're doing. But I want you to think about the special needs children, children that are not given the opportunity to some of these programs because the programs are not equipped to handle the special needs children. So I want you to make sure that they're being taken care of because in school settings, we're finding the same thing that's happening there. They're not getting the resources they need either to take care of the special needs children. But the upper-end classmen, their needs are getting met pretty substantially, funding as well. So I want you to pay attention to that as you go along, and we'll be adding to that later. The next thing I'd like to bring to your attention to, value health is on your agenda today for finances, but this organization is slowly, if not quickly, going to be dissolved. We're talking about a large number of people on Medicaid. Then I want you to turn your attention to the statement with Mission Hospital about the insurance. I certainly don't want you to fall into their insurance playground and get them to take their insurance company, whether they call it theirs or not, the doctors are owned by them anyway. So if it's an insurance company, I want you to think broader than what they're trying to get you to look at. Mission Hospital has grown, as you have well known, and I was the one that opened the eyes of the community when Western Highlands was here. And Western Highlands, I told them that Mission Hospital was doing this, and it scared them to death because they didn't know anything about it. So they've tried to enlarge their footprint very quickly in the community, and they have stretched their resources quite a bit, not meaning they don't have plenty of money. What we need in this community is competition. So if you can figure out a way to get insurance for our employees, fifteen hundred, fourteen hundred of them, or whatever, I want you to think larger than that. Value Health is going out. Seventy percent, if I'm not mistaken, per Medicaid, the hospital is going to be looking to halve that seventy percent. They need the private insurance, of course, to sustain them above that Medicaid line. These are things that we need to be looking at and not just let Mission Hospital take control of the situation and divert your attention to some insurance company that they have a back door to. Because, you know, money, it takes money to have an insurance company. So let's stop and think. What have they been doing to us in the past if they've got this kind of money in the back door anyway? I don't know if anybody ain't been screwed by insurance company at some point in time. So think broader than this narrow scope with Mission. Thank you all very much.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to have this public comment. I am speaking today as a professional, as a licensed clinical social worker, and also a licensed clinical addiction specialist here in Buncombe County, working in a inpatient, busy psychiatric unit, an adult unit. And so also, I'd like to preface this, that my graduate school work was actually on cannabis, and specifically cannabis and its impact on mental health. So today, I would like to advocate for those individuals that live in Buncombe County who are suffering from mental health disorders and also various medical disorders, for the County Commissioners to place cannabis on the lowest priority schedule for law enforcement. And there's a few reasons for that. The basic reason is that it's an infringement upon your basic civil rights and human rights. The second issue is that when you are caught, say, in possession or even selling cannabis, you are, you are strapped with a criminal record that follows you, which makes, you know, anything more of a hardship. So any, to jobs, to getting back into school, to getting government assistance, to getting your children back if they have been taken away. Additionally, what we have seen in jurisdictions that have enacted a medical marijuana program, there have been twenty-five percent less opiate fatalities in those jurisdictions. And I'd also like to point out that I have many patients who are suffering from various disorders. I work as a psychiatric social worker, so I primarily am working with those with bipolar, various psychosis, addiction. And I want to be clear that I do not feel like cannabis is a panacea for everything. It works just like any other medication in that there are going to be people who have adverse side effects. There are going to be people that it does not work for. And in that case, you would have a licensed medical doctor determining the level of care. What I think we have now is various interests at keeping this kind of in the dark. And so what I would like to do is advocate for those patients that don't have a voice and have you put that on the lowest priority schedule for Buncombe County.
Thank you. And I meant to mention at the beginning of the public comment, we would like to ask each person speaking to share their name and where they're from. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry I didn't say that at the beginning, but if you wouldn't mind for their minutes.
Yes, sir. Roberto Hess, H-E-S-S, in Asheville, North Carolina.
Thank you so much. All right. The gentleman in the back, and then I'll, and then you can follow.
Good evening. My name's Joshua Schaefer, and I'm from Canler, North Carolina. And I'm speaking on behalf of medical cannabis as well. As a resident of North Carolina, I moved back a few years ago because my father was on the lowest part of the totem pole for heroin addiction. He was a contractor here in Asheville. We built the skybar on the Flatiron Building. We've done, done a lot of work. And I introduced him to certain different forms of cannabis, and not just smoking it, but edibles and different other forms that I've found in Colorado. And he passed last year, but before he passed, he was clean for a year. And, um, he passed last year, but before he passed, he was clean for a year and a half off of heroin and Suboxone and other forms of harder core drugs that he was shooting up with. 'Cause it got to the point where even the Suboxone wouldn't suppress the need for heroin. Whereas extreme use of medical cannabis did. Whether it was eating it in his food or finding the new forms where there's different forms of wax. So I'm just, uh, pushing forward towards maybe considering a, a medical path towards medical cannabis for Buncombe County 'cause I've seen what it does. I also am a medical cannabis user myself, um, I was a cocaine addict and I got addicted to pain pills from my back. And, uh, since I've transitioned, I don't, I can go to work and come out to places like this before I was a hermit and didn't wanna see anybody because of the, the painkillers and what they did to me. So I just urge everybody to look into the medicine themselves. And like other people have said, it's not for everybody else. Some people do have bad reactions, my grandma died of cancer and she, she didn't like smoking it, it made her too groggy. But I've also seen it help other medical patients with cancer as well, so it's just something I urge, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Trammell and I am here speaking in, to the benefits of medical cannabis. Um, and I can give you a firsthand, um, sort of experience. My fourteen-year-old daughter was diagnosed in 2013 with a stage III C ovarian cancer. There is only eight hundred people in the United States that have even had this horrible disease. Um, she was a healthy, a child, she was on a travel softball team. She was, you know, very athletic and it was, this took us aback, we didn't, we didn't expect this. This was also four months after her father was raided for owning the medical marijuana dispensary in Fletcher, North Carolina. So we couldn't treat our child. Um, imagine thinking what you, you've, you've helped treat other people with cancer, you've helped treat other people with other diseases, but you can't help your own child. So we started treatment, we had no other choice. It was the state's, state's right that we, we give her chemotherapy even though we knew what chemotherapy does to someone's body. And I worked for Mission Hospital, I've been there for a very long time. Um, we asked for a CAM program, it's complementary alternative medicine, so that we could treat her with cannabis while we were giving her the chemotherapy. Just us asking for that got CPS called on us. So then we had to deal with CPS, trying to, trying to come in to see if we were harming our child, which we were not. We were trying to help our child benefit. We treated our child with what we knew we needed to while she was going through chemotherapy and we took that risk. My child finished chemotherapy a month and a half early and she gained twenty pounds. She wasn't sick, she didn't throw up, she, she could have sort of a normalcy of life. The US government owns patent number six-six-three-zero-five-zero-seven for the neuroprotections of, of the benefits of cannabinoids. It is beneficial to the patients at Mission Hospital. Just us asking for Marinol, which is the synthetic cannabinoid, we had to go all the way to the director of the hospital, Susan Memms, just to be able to get a legal prescription for our child because nurses and doctors did not wanna give her a legal substance because it was a synthetic marijuana. There are children out there and patients out there that need this to survive. And as a mother, I, I don't want any other mother to have to go through what we had to go through to make our child healthy. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today. My name is Tom Van Slamrock. If you'd asked me last month if I would be ever for medical cannabis, I would've probably laughed at you. Unfortunately, um, you know, I've spent some time doing some research. I've been, spent some time trying to find out exactly what good it has. Hearing some of the people out here today, hearing the people through the previous meetings speak about it, I decided to do my own little research, talked to a lot of people, looked at, uh, the benefits that there are, can now say that I absolutely am for medical cannabis. Um, however, at this point in time, I'm, I'm not for recreational, uh, use of marijuana. But I think we have to really dig deep in ourself and, and not just go by our past beliefs. I spent almost fifty years, um, absolutely against, um, all forms of, of marijuana. I've never used it and I never will, I hope that I never need it, uh, in the future. But, um, I'd ask that you just kinda do some homework with that. Just kinda maybe do some reading, talking around to some physicians, uh, and people that have a little bit more knowledge uh, than what we might, uh, have on our own, uh, take a look at that. I think that maybe some of you, uh, will kinda see that, that there are some benefits to that. Um, very surprised that I ever changed my mind on that. But at the same time, if, uh, especially you find folks being leaders, um, we, we owe it to the public to, to do our homework, to make sure that when we make decisions, we're making it to the benefit of the people that actually need it. Uh, those, the patients, the people who are living in pain and, and the people who are not just gonna go out and abuse it. I don't know how it's gonna be regulated and I don't know however that would ever happen. Um, I, I just know it, it's not about Big Pharma out there trying to get on touch with and, and control and all that. But there's a lot of questions that I still have, but I do know that these folks out there that need it and we should be able to, um, pass some, some laws that will enable them to have that. Thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you. All right, um, yes, you, and then is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, and you can follow, and then are there any others? All right, you two will be, uh, let the, okay, you, you can go, no, you're fine, you're fine, and then you'll be our last speaker.
My name's Randy Silver and, uh, I don't know if this is the time to speak on this or whether it's on the list, but it's on the, uh, agenda for the tollers, for the daycare center and it is, uh...
You, 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 you may speak on it, but if you do speak on it now, um, I would ask that you not speak on it 'cause we are gonna have a public hearing on it.
Okay, that's, that's, I, I didn't know, I'd never been here, so I thought that...
We, we will have a public hearing on that, so that's probably the best time to do it 'cause then you'll have all the information that the chap, the staff will have shared about it at that time. All right, yes, sir.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is James Harvey Junior. I'm, uh, the sixth generation from the Swanano Valley. Um, basically just wanna tell a little story about my father. Worked my entire life to provide for me and my mother, who, uh, my mother was also disabled from the time I was five years old. Um, in two thousand eight, my dad had a accident on the job. He fell off of a twelve-foot ladder and landed on his face on concrete. Needless to say, he couldn't work after that. The company was out of Cincinnati, Ohio, which is the worst state in the country for workman's comp. They settled for a third of his yearly salary. In the end, he had sold everything he'd worked his whole life for just to try to keep the house, which in the end was still auctioned off. I've seen my father cry more in the last six months of his life than all of it put together. He was on several narcotics, given to him by pain management and various doctors. Which really, in his mind, wasn't, it didn't, it wasn't him. One time, a friend had given him some cannabis and, uh, he medicated. First time I'd seen him smile in a long time, he said, "You know, son, if I could do this, I could probably make it." But he couldn't, the doctors would've ki- kicked him out of, uh, kicked him out of therapy and pain management and everything else. And three weeks later, he took his own life due to pain. He left five pages behind and that's all it said, "I can't wait for no more pain." My kids don't have a grandfather now. My dad would probably still be here today if he was legally able to medicate with cannabis. But due to foolishness, honestly, he's not here today. My kids will never get to know their grandfather. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, thank you all for, uh, who came out tonight to, uh, share your comments. Um, as I said during the beginning, we don't usually have, uh, kind of feedback from the commission, but I just, I would like to just share, um, one procedural piece of information for folks who are here because I think there are, um, you know, members of the commission who are interested in the issue that's been brought up a lot tonight. Um, as a commission, we do ha- um, we do have a, a, a policy of not adopting resolutions about matters that are statewide policy matters or federal policy matters. And as I understand it, the primary issue around, uh, that many people have spoken to today is a statewide, basically the state of North Carolina's policy as regards to the use of medical marijuana. So, um, the commission, um, is unlikely to consider a resolution on a statewide policy such as that, but there are other ways that commission members can lend their voice to support policies like that other than an official commission resolution. So I think there probably is interest in that and I think, um, members of the commission who, uh, who are, who are interested in that would be happy to, to, to explore some of those other, other options. So I just wanted to share those thoughts. Um, all right, uh, we are through the public comment section. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. And I believe there was a question about, um, we'd like to get a little bit of additional information. Commissioner Belcher asked about the, uh, Article forty-six Sales Tax Capital Projects Ordinance item. So is there someone who could just, um, provide a little bit of additional information about, about that item?
I'll be happy to, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, that's the Article forty-six Capital Projects Fund, uh, and it relates to the Allied Health Building. Uh, that building has finished the first phase of construction and floors one through four have been built out and that portion is, um, ready to close. There was two million dollars of savings left and this budget amendment proposes moving that in order to build out the fifth floor. And as part of that, there would be general classrooms, uh, early childhood education and physical therapy assistant programming available. Um, we anticipate the budget for that at one point eight million dollars and Greg Israel, who will manage the construction of that, has asked for the remaining two hundred thousand just to be available as contingency because construction costs are so volatile right now.
So I would, uh, one of the reasons I, um, had you explain that in the video portion of the meeting is that, uh, I would encourage the public to, to pull up these new capital fund project ordinances uh, that now include quite a bit more information, I just wanna thank you all for that. And, um, utilizing that top floor, uh, is certainly a, uh, you know, good stewardship on, on AB Tech's po- uh, part and the county's part and I appreciate that cooperation. But I, I would just encourage the public to pull those up, look at them 'cause the information, uh, is quite a bit, uh, than, than maybe a, a year or two ago. So I, I appreciate the improvement and the addition of the pictures is always, always helpful and allows, uh, some people who are unable to visit the asset to actually be able to see it and pull it up. And, uh, also you've got the location on there too, if someone chose to drive by and visit and see what they're investing in, so I thank you for doing that. And Chairman, thank you for allowing this to be pulled up so that we could have that discussion.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions about other items on the consent agenda, uh, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Great, the next item on our agenda is discussion of expanded access to childcare in Buncombe County and Commissioners Jasmine Beach Ferrara and Robert Presley will tee off this disc- discussion and then we'll have some other folks who are with us, um, join them in the discussion, so sure.
Good evening everyone, thank you for being here this evening. I'm honored to be standing with Commissioner Presley and honored to be working with him on ongoing efforts as well as everyone else on commission to be responding to needs and opportunities to better serve our kids. Uh, we just have a few moments of prepared remarks and then are thrilled to be inviting folks up who are doing incredible work in the community on this issue. I think if you asked pretty much any parent in the community, um, what they would do to make sure that their child had every opportunity in the world to succeed and thrive, they would say pretty much anything in my power. That's exactly the spirit we need as a community and it's one that I believe we have. But we also face a reality right now that too many kids in Buncombe County are struggling. One quarter of kids in our community live in poverty. Many others struggle due to factors like lack of access to healthy food, unstable housing, the devastations of addiction and the impact of racial disparities. I truly believe that together we can work to ensure that every child in Buncombe County has an equal opportunity to thrive. And I'm proud to be serving with Commissioner Presley and everyone else on this commission and to be serving in a community where there's so much readiness to act and so much genuine care for our kids. When we move from talking about these things to acting and looking at strategies at work, expanding access to early childhood education, especially pre-K, quickly rises to the top. It works in the short term to help kids succeed in school and it sets in motion a lifetime of benefits from improved health to access to post-secondary education to increased employment and earnings. That's what's motivated this county commission's vote to support sixty new childcare slots, including twenty-eight pre-K slots at Alida Homes and to create a new pre-K classroom at Johnston Elementary School that will serve eighteen kids and will be run by the community, by community action opportunities. Good news like this also inspires us to do more and we know the need is there. We know this in part due to research being conducted by the Asheville-Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative, which is bringing together stakeholders from across education, families and the business community to charter course for our community to substantially increase access to quality early childhood education. As we move forward, we're all appreciative of both their leadership and vision. Tonight though, we wanted to take a moment to celebrate the good news and what it means for all those kids who will be starting classes, uh, in the weeks and months to come. Uh, and especially to recognize the incredible folks who are leading this effort at Alida Homes and at Johnston Elementary. I'll turn things over to Commissioner Presley and then invite you all to come up.
Well, I'm just very proud that I was, we was in a three-on-three meeting and Jasmine had brought it up and I said, "That's exactly what I want with myself, Commissioner Belcher, I think you hear us all the time talk about our grandkids." You know, this is the future of Buncombe County and that's why I am so thrilled to be a part of this and this experiment coming up here, I guess. But we're looking for much more down the road, thank you.
Do you wanna join us and say a few words?
What an exciting event. Thank you Commissioners and staff for allowing us to be here and thank you properly for the opportunity to partner for our children. We know that Johnston had a very tough year last year and we've gone beyond just thinking and planning to action. We have the Isaac Coleman Initiative, we have this new Head Start Classroom, which I visited yesterday and it's going to be ready and these children are going to be prepared for school, but they're going to be prepared for success and you're a part of that. And look at what partnerships can do, so on behalf of Buncombe County Schools, thank you, thank you, thank you. We have a new principal I wanted you to see and meet this evening. She is an experienced principal that wanted to move to Johnston. We stole her from Barnersville, so I'm off the Christmas card list from Barnersville. But this is Dana Grimes and she has hit the ground running. We're planning a playground, we're planning a D-Review project and you needed to meet her this evening, so thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Longer, good evening. Um, I wanna thank you publicly to help us build future Irwin Warriors and that's what we're gonna do this year. Um, it's been a collaborative effort with Buncombe County Schools Government, the Head Start Program, Buncombe County Maintenance and my very own Ms. Betty Ray, my head custodian. She's seventy-five years old by the way and she is doing amazing work. So we are really thrilled that we have this opportunity and I just wanted to thank you very, very much, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners and, um, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm Brian Repass from Community Action Opportunities Head Start and I'm pleased to be here- I'm Brian Repass from Community Action Opportunities Head Start, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to thank you all and the Buncombe County Schools for this great partnership. It's going to allow us to serve an additional 18 children and families in that Johnston Elementary School area, so we're super pleased to do that. And I'm actually really excited to introduce Kelly Moreland, who's a Head Start parent and represents our Head Start Policy Council as the chair of that council and can speak for Head Start Parents.
Hi, I'm Kelly Moreland, and I'm from Asheville, North Carolina. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you, board members and commissioners, for this opportunity to talk. I'd like to tell a little bit of a story. My daughter is five now, but at 20 months old, she was thriving. She was walking, talking, everything, but 20 months, it stopped. She quit talking completely. She had sensory issues, and they tested her for autism. So at three years old, she was diagnosed with being on the spectrum of autism, which is devastating for a parent. I didn't know what to do. So I quit work, and I knew how to spring into action. And I want to praise Community Action Opportunities for having the Head Start Program and in collaboration with Buncombe County Schools. They have provided speech therapists, occupational therapists, special education specialists to work with my daughter and other children. And I'm happy to say that she is going to a regular classroom, starting kindergarten. So that's what it's all about, is early intervention, aggressive early intervention. Because if it wasn't for them, I'd be on a downhill slope, to say the least. So I want to thank you because this is our future. This is Buncombe County's future, is our kids. And the more opportunities that they have to learn and grow in a healthy, you know, stable situation is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
My name is Becky Williams. I'm the Chief Financial Officer and Interim CEO for Alida Homes. And I want to thank you for the wonderful opportunity you've given us with this new child development building. It's being remodeled. In fact, I went and looked at it today. It's been painted. It looks fabulous. We have 62 new slots, and as of yesterday, there's one vacancy left. So we are a five-star child development center. And to address what Mr. Rice said earlier, we do developmental day. So we have children in wheelchairs, on trach tubes. We've had children who were addicted to meth, and we had to give them shots to help them wean them off. So we, I'm bragging here, but we have a fantastic child development program, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the opportunity that you've given us. And Tammy Ruckman, our resource development officer, and Frank Taylor, who's our chief development officer, I don't know if y'all want to add anything to what I've said.
Again, we just want to thank the commission very much. Our open house is going to be September 29th. You'll come at 5:00 and do a ribbon cutting, and then we're going to invite everybody to go through the corn mat.
We're actually opening the center on September the 5th. Will be the first day of operation. Thank you so much.
Thank all of you who are here tonight. Thanks for all that you're doing to support this great need in our community. We know that we're just touching a part of the need, but it's so important, and I think it provides great models that we can hopefully build on. So thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you, commissioners, for leading us in that presentation. Before we move on to our next item, I wanted to acknowledge that I neglected earlier to recognize, we have, we're fortunate to have our sheriff of Buncombe County with us tonight, Sheriff Van Duncan. Thank you for being with us, and thank you for the work that you and all the men and women in your department do for Buncombe County. All right, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing, which is the rezoning request on the Tim and Catherine Tolar request, and Debbie Trumpy will explain the request.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tim and Catherine Tolar have applied to rezone a 1.64 acre parcel located at 18 Patent Cemetery Road from Residential District R1 to Public Service District PS. The property is currently developed with a manufactured home, a single-family home, and a daycare facility. North of the subject parcel are one vacant lot and two lots with single-family residences zoned R1. Properties to the west are vacant and are also zoned R1. Properties to the east, separated by Patent Cemetery Road, contain single-family residences, and they're zoned R1. The property to the south and southeast contains the W.D. Williams Elementary School, separated by Patent Cemetery Road, and zoned PS. The applicant is seeking the rezoning in order to expand enrollment of their existing childcare facility. The planning department recommends approval of the proposed rezoning as it is consistent with a comprehensive land use plan. The 2013 update highly suggests public service development be within reasonable proximity to major transportation corridors and within combined water and sewer service areas. The plan also highly suggests that public service development be located outside of steep slope areas, outside of high elevations, outside of moderate and high hazard slope stability areas, and outside FEMA flood hazard areas. The planning department also recommends approval as the current childcare facility and proposed expansion are more closely aligned with the institutional uses found within the PS zoning district than with the residential uses found in the R1 district. The planning board held a public hearing on this application on July the 17th. Tim Tolar, the applicant, discussed his plans for the expansion of the childcare facility. Two people spoke during public comment. They were both concerned that the proposed childcare facility could impact the right-of-way easement to their properties. The planning board found that the proposed MAP amendment is consistent with the land use plan, is reasonable, and in the public interest, as the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding public service-oriented development of W.D. Williams Elementary and Community High School, is adjacent to properties currently zoned PS, is served by public water and sewer, and is readily accessed by an NCDOT-maintained road. The planning board recommended approval in a vote of seven to zero, and I will take any questions you have for me now.
How long has the childcare facility been there?
It was there prior to zoning. I don't know exactly when it was started.
That's good enough. All right, I don't see any other questions at this time, so let's go ahead and hold a public hearing on this item. We'll open the public hearing at 6:00. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak during the hearing? Yes, sir. And then you can go next, but you can go first.
I'm Randy Silver, and I have the property adjoining the proposed site for the childcare center, and it's going to be located off of a right-of-way, which is, back in 2001, the Tollars tried to close the right-of-way off, and here is a court order saying that they could not close, block the right-of-way or impede traffic coming in and out of there. And the right-of-way was set up for the use of Mayhorn or her assignees. I don't know that they even have a right to use it, but they're planning on coming in and parking on the right-of-way, and they have the site plan that was giving out, which is basically just something marked, but it does not show the right-of-way to the piece of property, and the, it doesn't show the right-of-way coming by the property here. There is no parking at all where they're going to put the childcare center. So they will have to park across, if they can even use that right-of-way, they'll have to park across and then come across the right-of-way to deliver their kids to school. Now, they have made some parking at a storage building for two cars, and then they're going to park up at their house that they have right now, and then they're going to walk the kids across to the area there, which makes a very unsafe situation. Plus, there's construction going on on that right-of-way. There will be four more, three more houses. Right now, there's two that adjoins that right-of-way, and there'll be three more adjoining that right-of-way. And if they expand that to 40 children, that if you figure two cars, two people per car, that's 20 cars with no parking at all on-site. And they have, they need to make it, if they're going to do this, it needs to be where, they haven't even marked the right-of-way, they don't know where the right-of-way is, and when they drew up a site plan, and so they have, and I do not believe that a mother that's running late with her children are going to want to park, and if it's raining, walk all the way across that right-of-way to the unit. So they should provide parking at the unit that they're going to. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not real clear to what all is going on with the daycare. I'm Bonnie Vess again, and this is the reason I'm here. My property is across the street, and just to be a little bit clear of why I feel, I went to the no zoning meetings because I was for no zoning. Well, unfortunately, voted on it, and they have zoning. So now mine is a residential property, and I have my daughter in that piece of property. The people besides the daycare have mowed down all of the privacy without my knowledge of happening, so it has really decreased, in my opinion, the aesthetics of the piece of property. And I had no idea what's going on across the street. There's no way on earth that 40 children could be in that one house and it be safe. Now, coming out of my driveway, which is across the street, I guess for the proposed piece of property is about as dangerous as you can get. I always have to lean like this in my car to see that a car isn't coming down the street, and there's a great big curb, and then you go to W.D. Williams. I am upset that you want to take all the zoning that you fixed of residential and start putting it into whatever somebody else wants, you know? I didn't really want zoning, but now that you have it, it's not really applying unless somebody else wants something else. And I'm not against the daycare. I think that's a great idea. It's just that I can't see how you could have 40 people in that little building. And I don't even know about the right-of-way or anything like that. I'm just near there, and I was, missed the meeting because I think we were out of town or something, which I don't even really know what's going on, except that it's near my house. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir.
My name is Tim Tolar. I'm one of the owners of the daycare that we have currently now at 18 Patent Cemetery. The expansion of the daycare is not 40, it is 30. We have created six parking spaces down below. I've actually cut into my property to increase the roadway, they're calling the right-of-way. We own the property. There is an easement or a right-of-way through our property. We own that property. It cuts right through the middle. We've also created parking spaces at the top, like Mr. Silver said. As far as danger, you have W.D. Williams Elementary right across the street from us. We currently have 12 kids in our daycare that is on that property. It's attached to our home. The bus drops those kids off. We've tried everywhere in the world to accommodate our neighbors, to keep peace. We've dropped down from 40 kids to 30 kids, even though Buncombe County is in dire need of childcare. We've invested pretty much everything we have into this project. We've followed all the guidelines of the planning board, and at this point, we just don't know what else we can do to appease the neighborhood. They're developing our property, the property behind ours now. For some reason, over the years, they've seemed to think they own that right-of-way. They do have a right-of-way, but it's strictly for access and egress. That's it. And we've had them come through our property. We have a separate driveway adjoining it, and we've never said nothing. I've had to pull on their driveway, and nothing's ever been said. I understand their concerns, but the playground, the daycare will all be in one area off the right-of-way. It's only a 24-foot right-of-way, 12-foot on either side from the center. I've maintained that right-of-way for over 22 years. We've been in the daycare business for over 20 years, and never once have I asked my neighbors that use the right-of-way or their families that use it to help maintain it, and they've never offered to maintain it. We're just trying to get along, and we're trying to expand our business and meet the needs of childcare. And we would just ask that you all approve this. We appreciate it very much. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Horn Silver, and my parents were the original owners of the property that's in question and had left the 24-foot right-of-way through this property for family. I have a disabled daughter and two other daughters, which the property was going to be for them. And we have just developed that property just recently. My daughter has just built a house there, and we have the other house, and I have two other, three other lots there to be developed. The 24-foot right-of-way is correct. We haven't been using it because we haven't lived there, and now that we are, we will help maintain the road. But my biggest concern is the safety of these children. You were talking about big equipment trucks coming in and out of this small 24-foot right-of-way to the top of the road where his daycare is now. They have a turnaround up there where the cars come in and they come out, and I have pictures, because a picture's worth a thousand words. The cars come in and they exit. We have had to wait on Patent Cemetery, the main road across from the school, to let some of these daycare people out. However, when you come down into where this proposed modular is going to sit directly on the right-of-way, there is no turnaround. Those cars are going to pull in, and he has three outdoor sheds there. One is a waste container, and he's made a little parking place in front of those, and a garage, and he's got a parking place in front of that, and he's got another building here, and he's got a parking place in front of that. And then the rest of the cars, if you have 30 kids, then you're talking about 15 more cars, including a possibility of eight to 10 more cars being built and coming in and out of that road. So there's nowhere to go except to back up into the right-of-way. So you have a situation where you've got this congested area where there's no turnaround, and cars that come into the right-of-way will have to back out into the right-of-way in order to get out. So what if another car is coming in? There's nowhere to go. And the kids who get out at the top, if these three parking spots are taken, they've got to walk all the way down the side of the right-of-way, which in winter is pretty difficult, and cross over the right-of-way with two kids, three kids, however many you have, with other cars coming out. So it is just, to me, it's just- So it is just, it, to me, it's just, is it worth the extra money you're gonna get with this daycare versus one child whose safety is in question? And I just think it needs to be denied until you go and take a look at this property and see the outlay. Now Tim and Kathy Toler, I have, they're great people. I mean, she's run this daycare and I respect her immensely. But the, where the location of this daycare is, is really a safety issue for children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, don't see any other folks who indicate they want to speak during the public hearing. So we will close the public hearing at six twelve and, uh, bring it back to the commission for further discussion. Um, I guess I'll just tee it off. Uh, Ms. Trumpy, do you have any, um, any comments you'd like to share just based on some of the concerns that were raised during the hearing?
Well, this is, uh, a hearing for rezoning, so we're not considering any kind of development plan at this point. In order to develop the, the daycare facility, they will have to submit a site plan showing, um, where the, the buildings will be located and provide the required parking per the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. So, so no, even though there's been obviously discussion about a specific development concept, that development concept will not be approved by a rezoning, although it would be then allowed within that use, but it'll have to get through a zone-specific process.
That's correct.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve based on, what's our language that we need?
Consistent with the land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest.
Consistent with the land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest.
So before we vote on that, I have a, um, a question.
Uh, one, one minute. Can we just, can we see if there's a second to the motion first?
Okay, that's fine. Not a problem.
Second.
Right, question.
Okay, so, um, you know, I'm always sympathetic to right of way issues. They're, you know, they're very difficult and, but they're, they're pretty written pretty clear. Um, the parking setback requirements, when, when a modular is placed, all that is gonna have to be approved. And assuming that every, uh, concern that was brought up tonight can be brought up again and will be part of that process. Is that correct?
Well, we don't, um, look at private easement agreements. Those are enforced through the courts. If it is, uh, indeed a, a public road right of way, then we will, uh, have to require the, um, setback off of the, the right of way.
So there will be a setback requirement?
There are setbacks off of public roads as well as off property lines.
Is there any setback off of, uh, right of way? Modular can't be set across right of way.
We do not enforce private easement agreements. Um, that is, that is something that the courts enforce. If it is a public right of way and we'll have to look into that, uh, there is a setback off of a public right of way of ten feet.
Okay. And you have to, there is a parking?
And there are parking.
Required certain number of parking spaces per, um, student or?
Uh, uh, students or classrooms. I, I don't have that right this minute, but that's something they have to comply with.
But for now, we're just talking about changing the zoning.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I, I understand that that's what we're talking about. I'm just, I'm trying to, to process the, the concerns that, that everyone has. And, uh, it sounds like they have, have worked pretty well together in the past and, uh, I would assume so in the future, but.
Other questions or comments? All right, let's vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the county manager's report and the topic is strategic investment in youth and workforce.
Uh, hi. Chairman and commissioners, much as you talked about early childhood education, this board's made a commitment to build pathways to employment for our young adults. You get to hear about two of those programs you invest in tonight. The first you'll hear from Christie Cre- Christie Cheek. As Christie comes up, who's the director of career and technical education with Buncombe County Schools and is gonna talk about the Career Academy. If you've not had the opportunity to go there, graduation, it's a life-changing event. Um, second, Erica Germer from the city is gonna talk about the Youth Academy Leadership Program that we are honored to, um, invest in along and that's led through the city. If you've not had an opportunity to work with a KLA intern, I encourage you to think about taking one on this summer. It's a great opportunity and let you hear about both these programs.
Thank you so much.
I just said I wish I had a mint or something, so, um, I certainly thank you commissioners for letting us be here tonight. Uh, school hasn't even started and we have students here, so it's a great, great time for us. Uh, one of the things I want to do first though is, um, ask Commissioner Belcher if he will come here with us just a minute. We have a special presentation for him. And Max Vieira, a rising ninth grader at, um, Irwin High School is gonna come up. We have a pathways camp through career and technical education promoting career pathways. And if you've worked with Nathan Ramsey and you know how passionate he is about, uh, career pathways. And, uh, Joe, Commissioner Belcher, attended, uh, our camp and he was our guest speaker. And our students made, uh, toolboxes. They also, there's a great apron if you'd like to model that for us. And a chef's hat and the purpose of this, all the students went through these camps and the purpose really is to ignite sparks in them, to show career pathways. See, let's just dawn these things. They look really, really nice for us. But all of the students, Max, you did a great job. Are you, you can come back up here and have a picture if you want. But, uh, he, uh, Commissioner Belcher had his picture made with Max. And one of the things we certainly want to do is identify opportunities for students who, number one, can see light at the end of a tunnel for, uh, opportunities for Buncombe County. And, uh, certainly the work with career pathways. Commissioner Belcher talked about that toolbox specifically. But we have great opportunities for jobs out there and our students just need to be aware of them. So what a great thing and I certainly appreciate, uh, all of the time and talents of these students and certainly Commissioner Belcher as he takes his time and comes and speaks with them. So thank you. We appreciate it very much. Thank you, Max. Yes, you can go back now. Yes, you can go back too. Yes, I know. Now it is a very, uh, big privilege to recognize Robin Pass from Irwin High School and her students from the Career Academy. This program was started ten years ago and it's hard to believe that. But students, uh, again, they typically know what their mom or dad does or maybe a grandparent. And they need to expand that opportunity of look past those kinds of role models. So these students each summer have, uh, participated in hospitality camp. And certainly what we want to do, again, making opportunities available. And certainly the community is investing in certified career pathways, uh, be that in advanced manufacturing, hospitality and tourism, certainly in healthcare. And, uh, students, they just are the shining stars. So I'm gonna be quiet, let Mrs. Pass speak. But when you hear from these students, Commissioner Belcher was there again with us on their graduation day and I think he can tell you, they are pretty darn incredible. So here they are.
Thank you all so much for having us tonight and thank you also, um, for giving me the opportunity to participate in what I consider to be an awesome, life-changing experience for the students at Irwin High School and even for me as someone who gets to play a small role in this really amazing program. Um, you know that it is a four-year program. We find our students in eighth grade from teacher recommendation and we take them through the next four years, uh, both in the classroom, through business classes for many of them. And what I consider to be the best part of the job, the out-of-the-classroom experiences that we give them in Career Academy. Um, they talked about expanded access and opportunity and I think that is a huge part of what Career Academy is all about. Um, I've really tried to expand that part of it where we take the students out into our community and business partners. We try to expose them to what's out, what's available, um, hospitality and tourism. But also, as Christie mentioned, advanced manufacturing. We've done just this year, um, uh, Silverline Plastics and, uh, Plastic Card Lock Tech International has been a, a partner for us in the past. I feel like some of those moments that you don't see on paper, when we take them to volunteer uh, with our little warriors at Johnston and we read to them. This year we went to Eblin and participated in helping unpack the, the shelves for our Christmas toy store. Some of those opportunities where you get to see students as people are some of the most important moments, I think, in our program. I'm really excited to have these four, uh, young ladies and young gentlemen with me tonight who are seniors in our program, so this will be their fourth year participating in the program. As you'll find, I think that what three years of Career Academy does is really creates a family. And I could not be more proud of all of them joining us tonight, changing work plans, changing plans outside with friends to be here. And they all stepped up to the, uh, occasion so that they could share a little bit about what Career Academy means to them. Um, we have Yalen Valdez, Chelsea Jones, Dante Edwards and Eddie Gardner. Um, and I'm also proud to say that I have another young lady in the crowd in the back who, two of my young ladies this year, we were able to also do a partnership with the KLA program. So two of my young ladies participated in that as well. Um, but I'm gonna have them come up and Eddie, we'll start with you.
They're a little nervous, but they're great.
A lot nervous.
Um, I like the Career Academy program because freshman year was not a good year for me and it helped me from dropping out of high school, honestly.
Wow, there you go.
Yeah.
Well said.
Well, um, really, it made me open my eyes more about, like, a more, I mean, like, other than sports, cause that's all I wanted to do is play sports. Uh, it helped me, like, cause when I got hurt, tore my whole ACL. And that was devastating to me and my teachers overlooked at me. Well, these two, Miss Chee, Miss Stevens, well, she not here, but, uh, anyways, yeah. It, uh, this program has done a lot for me.
For me, it taught me, like, I figured out what I want to do when I leave, like, when I finish after graduation. It taught me that I know that I could do more than what like my parents say of me or what my brother says I can do, that really I can excel almost anything I put my mind into. So thanks to all my teachers, cause they really have taught me a lot.
Uh, it really helped me, like, definitely get through classes and pass them. Helped me catch up on my classwork that I didn't get to do, helped me do homework that I didn't know how to do. Let me go back to teachers that, uh, would show me how to do what I needed to do. And it's helped me just get to where I am now and finishing up my senior year. Helped me do everything I've done so far in high school.
That's a big team.
I did have to say something.
I'm extremely proud of these young ladies and these gentlemen and I'm so honored to be a part of it. Thank you for having the vision to invest in this program and in Irwin High School. And, um, thank you, cause we are changing lives and you are a big part of that. So thank you so much.
Let's give these kids a round of applause. Absolutely, yeah. So chairman, if I could just say something, I've had the opportunity to speak to these young, uh, men and women for a few years, maybe three. And, um, they're, they're wonderful. The, the young man that didn't want to go first, uh, he, he, you put him around tables with food and a bunch of other, other folks, he's, he, he can chat it up pretty good, so. I've, I heard his presentation. It was excellent and all the others. And I, I believe, uh, it, didn't one of the, uh, young ladies get an internship with, uh, tourism related? Two, two, because I, I recognized one of them that was at the TDA meeting back there. And so that's, uh, just wonderful, just great, great work and you're just, uh, these are really great young men and women. I, I, I like to say kids come up, cause I'm an old man, but, uh, they are, they are great young men and women. You should be proud of every, every comment you made was, uh, helpful to the commissioners and we appreciate you doing it, uh, well said tonight.
That is a great transition as Erica comes up. The KLA program provides paid internship opportunities, but most important, provides leadership training and development for youth and Erica has just done an outstanding job. And we really are proud to get to partner with this city on this.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Erica Germer. I'm a resident of Asheville, that's for the record. And I am so pleased to be here tonight. This is my first time coming to the commissioners' meeting in now eleven summers of directing the KLA program. So I want to first and foremost, thank you in person for your generous and, uh, and outstanding support of the city program for the past decade. So, um, in a nutshell, briefly, KLA is an internship and college access program for high school students, most of whom will be first in their families to go to college. So this program really emphasizes three things, which is careers, community service and college. So this summer, the main component of KLA is when our students are working all across our, our community at nonprofits and at businesses and with city and county departments, including DSS. So thank you, um, for that. I think I saw Tammy Shook earlier. But, um, thank you again for that support. And then once the students, um, transition to the school year, that's when we, we kick in with our community service and social justice work. And I work one-on-one with the rising seniors who are gonna soon be seniors in two weeks as they prepare for their college applications and looking for scholarships. So, um, I do have a list, which I'm not sure if I can approach the bench, but I'll hand this to Lisa E B of all the different internship sites this summer, because, um, for the first year, we now have included Buncombe County High School students in addition to Asheville City Schools. So this was, um, a landmark year of inclusion and expansion of the program. Um, we had a great year or, or summer, eight weeks. We ended on Friday. And, um, I have some people with me. As Robin mentioned, I have amazing students who are gonna do a much better job speaking than I am, cause I get all nervous up here. So, um, I'll let them explain who they are and what they did this summer. And again, thank you for your support and I look forward to next summer and continuing work that we're doing. So I think Fisayo is up first, so.
Oh, it's fine. It's perfect. Thank you. Hi, um, hello commissioners. Hi. I'd like to thank you all for the donation that you made towards KLA because I am a final year student at Early College, which that means that I will be graduating from AB Tech in May of 2018. KLA has offered me the connections and the relationships with members in the community that I will use for my future political career, which I hope to explore. I am finishing as a political science major and, thank you. And I hope to transfer to North Carolina State University to, um, complete my bachelor's in arts with a double major in environmental studies and political science and A minor in business. Thank you. So what KLA has done for me is, for me, I was an immigrant from the country of Nigeria. I was born in Lagos and the politics over there, let's say it needs help, much, much help. And for me, it's really inspired me seeing that the politics over in the United States and especially city council politics, because I was president of Early College for two years. And it really inspired me to put my foot out there and to step up and to be the leader in the community that I want to see. So KLA has really encouraged me to put my foot out there and to get my career started as early as possible. Even though I'm so young, I can make an impression and really work my way up there. So one day I hope to be in the seat that you all are and hearing students in my position and hearing how programs like KLA really impacted their future. So thank you for your time and thank you for your donations.
Hello. My name is Zion Walker. I'm a rising senior at Asheville High. Um, this is my second year in KLA. Um, first of all, I want to thank you all for helping find KLA. Um, it was a great experience. It helped me make connections with people from different schools and also people with different backgrounds than me. And also, um, I interned at Delta Combs. I was on the engineering team. Um, that was a good spot for me for helping out with floor plans. And also I got to go out to a job site. So, uh, it helped me, like, get to see the life of an engineer. So like, once I become an engineer, uh, I want to be kinda going in. So it helped me, like, get to see the life of an engineer. So like, once I become an engineer, I want to be kind of going in blind. So I got some good experience at Delta Combs. And I want to thank you all again.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jasmine Riddle. And I'm a senior at the School of Inquiry and Life Sciences at Asheville. And this was my second year as a Kayla student. The first year, I interned at Alida Homes. And this year, I interned at, interned at Mahack. And that was a good work site for me, because in the future, I want to be a dermatologist. So my supervisor exposed me to the business and clinical side of healthcare, which is really beneficial. And Kayla has also helped me with college readiness in a way. Erica, she gives us really good advice on how to write essays. And she looks over the essays for us and gives us tips on that. So that has been helpful. And yeah, I just want to thank you guys for funding Kayla this year.
Good afternoon. My name's Jennifer Silva-Ramira, a rising sophomore at the School of Inquiry and Life Sciences in Asheville. It's in Asheville High, but they're two separate schools. I'm very honored to have worked with the Kayla program this summer. I had an internship at Children First Community Schools at the Emma Community. It really taught me about food and financial assistance for families in need in the Emma community. I would like to thank you all for funding Kayla each year. It really helps students like me coming from the minority in the Hispanic community. It helps all of us become a very happy family, you could say. And helps us all network throughout Asheville and learn more about our community as ourselves. I'm really thankful for the opportunity it gave me. And I can't wait for the upcoming years. Thanks so much.
Good evening. My name is Iva Tyson. I'm a rising sophomore at the School of Inquiry Life Sciences at Asheville. After graduating, I want to pursue my career in the medical field as a pediatrician. As a seventh grader, I heard about the amazing program Kayla. And I immediately wanted to learn more. I participated in IRL. And there, I met Ms. Erica. I was honored to be accepted as a sophomore, because not many of us are accepted at such young ages. Over the course of my experience this summer, I have been able to network with those who are similar and different than me and bond together as a family. Thanks to our growth, growth coaches and Ms. Erica, I was able to continue my education this summer at our workshops, learning new topics each week. This summer, I was given the privilege of interning at the Walton Street and Grant Center Summer Camps. I was able to learn new things through the activities with the kids and also develop leadership skills and patient skills working with the kids. Kayla has, excuse me, Kayla has been an amazing opportunity. It allowed me to develop independence as a young woman. And I want to thank Ms. Kay, Ms. Erica, mostly, for allowing me to be a part of this amazing opportunity. And most of all, I want to thank you all for funding this amazing, this amazing program for youth my age. And thanks for your time. And thanks for allowing me to be here.
Hello. My name is Caitlin Schreier. I first want to recognize Ms. Pass. She is the one who recommended me this, to this program. And I'm so glad I took this opportunity. And I want to thank Erica for taking the risk on me and letting me have an experience, an eventful summer. I interned at the Chamber of Commerce, as Mr. Belcher said, and explore Asheville. I did various things as research projects. I went to several meetings. I got to tour the Hampton Inn and Suites in the Vilmar Village and at New AC Hotels. This was a perfect fit for me, because I want to do hospitality and tourism. Hopefully, my big goal is to own a hotel one day. So I just can't, I can't thank you guys enough for funding this program and giving me just a, a great experience. Thank you.
So with that, as you can see, I have an extraordinary group of people to work with every year. I keep track of the Kayla alumni. And as I think it was Iva who mentioned, we had growth coaches this summer. So we had five alumni who are now in college come back and serve as mentors, peer mentors to the students, because I had my handful with, with almost forty students. So again, thank you. And if anybody needs an intern, Fasayo with her eye on government work would certainly comes with highest recommendations. So let me know if you have any work that an intern could do during the school year. So thank you again for your support.
I have one, one thank you. And your kids are awesome. How many Kayla kids go on to college?
One hundred percent. Yeah.
And you, they all present very well.
Thank you. We practiced. I think they practiced more than me. Thank you very much. And we're going to take a picture. Oh, I do want, I'm sorry. I do want to recognize, we have a young lady in the audience, Erica, another Erica, who came, but she did not present, but she was here this whole time supporting her peers. So Erica, just give a little wave. There she is. So thank you.
All right, terrific job.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the second reading of the ordinance to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sundays at licensed premises. We had a public hearing on this topic at our previous meeting. So I believe we do not require one at this meeting. So I believe we can proceed directly to a motion on the ordinance. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
I'm, oh, a second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, and just so we're clear, can you just raise your hand if you vote, voted against, just so we make sure we got it right? Okay, thank you very much. All right, it's approved. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Public School Capital Needs Fund Savings Reallocation to Community High Project. And Tim Flora and Tim Fairley are both here. So which Tim is going to tee us up? All right, thanks.
Chairman, Commissioners, you have a budget amendment before you. Basically, these are two projects that you have previously approved as recommendations from the School Capital Fund Commission. The amendment is for, for three hundred thousand dollars that we want to move between the community high school project, or actually move from the Kane Creek Middle School project to the community high school project. And we've got Tim Fairley here, who is the Director of Facilities for the Buncombe County Schools, to sort of walk you through the project if you have any questions. But basically, what it is, is construction bids are coming in a little bit higher than expected. And so for the community high school, there was a greater need. We had some savings from the Kane Creek Middle School roofing project that we want to move, that we are recommending moving from that project to cover the cost of the, the project at the community high school. In addition, I believe there's going to be some value engineering that will be going on, because I think the cost is rather significant, more than three hundred thousand dollars. But I think they're going to be looking at some value engineering to cover some of the additional costs. And then if there are extra costs, they probably, it's more than likely, will be coming back to you maybe later in the year, seeking some lottery fund money from the schools to, to cover the additional needs. But we've got Mr. Fairley here, if you have any questions in regards to that.
Tim, I just have one comment. Is it possible to pull up the, the, the budget ordinance that I've bragged on y'all so well on?
I am not sure if they're going to be able to pull that one up. It would be on your link, but I'm not sure that they're going to be able to get that up on the screen.
Okay.
Can you pull up that, can you, can you pull up the, the budget amendment by chance?
Sure they can.
And I guess we can.
That's Superman back in there.
Technology is a great thing.
Absolutely.
I'll say while we're waiting, anything that helps Community High get done, I'm all for.
The, the other, the other comment too, which I think you made pretty clear, is that there's no additional funds.
Cost, cost of the county, correct.
Cost of the county.
Right. We are just, we are just shuffling resources based upon need.
So. There, there is a vote. So maybe this will come, come up in a second. But is there, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve in a second. Are there any questions from Commissioners? Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? All right. All in favor, please say aye. Oh, Jerry, all right. Mr. Rice, come up. You, you can come out. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see it first. Yeah, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of Board. When we look at this, how much money was that they're moving?
I'm sorry, three hundred thousand?
They're moving three hundred? If you're moving three hundred thousand, what was the need for the community middle, or the middle school to start with? If the needs weren't there, why would you have the money to move? It sounds to me like we might look at the bigger projects and find out that we've got a lot of money that's not really necessary. So I think there need to be some conservative fires put on what is going on. I don't think it's too conservative if you've got that kind of money to move around. I mean, I'm just bringing something to your attention. I hope you're paying attention. It's the big money. And if you can move it around in a project like this, that kind of money, I think, I think it's worth looking into all the two hundred million or so that was appropriated to begin with.
All right. Any, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. To Tim Fairley and Tim Flora. All right, the next item on our agenda, we have some board appointments that we need to address. First, we have the Women's Commission. There's a very large list of folks who are interested in serving. We did ask the Women's Commission if they had any recommendations, looking at the current members who are serving and some of the additional perspectives that might be helpful there. The Commission has made recommendations for four specific people that they would like to, to have serving on the board. So one option would be to support that recommendation and appoint, appoint those four members. But we can handle it however the board would like.
I'm good with that.
I'd like to move that we do that.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, the second item is the AB Tech Community College Board of Trustees. We have one vacancy and we have two applicants.
Make a motion for Gary Roberts. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, the next. We're done with the business for the meeting. I would just like to announce that the next regular meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners will be in room three two six at two hundred College Street in downtown Asheville. We have a closed session to address two different topics. One is a legal matter. And the other is an economic development matter.
Yes, sir.
So we need a motion to go into closed session for those two reasons.
I so moved.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I do not expect the County Commission to take any action on either of the matters that we are going into closed session to address tonight. And I do not expect the County Commission to take up any further business when we come back out of closed session. We're in closed session.